We're ready when you are mayor. We're ready.
I'm calling the pending order, this is the regular session of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, state of Arizona. Being held on Tuesday, November twenty first, twenty twenty three, at seven P M. on our council chambers.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill is excused. Councilmember Joni Giacchino isn't here yet. Uh, councilmember Frank Davis is excused. Mayor Ken Budge. Councilmember Leslie Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Mel Sweet.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Logan Dodd, operations manager, Tim Cox, police chief, Jay Ritchie, deputy police chief, Melissa Hartman, city planner, Joe Estes, city attorney.
Thank you for uh a moment tonight while I ask you to stand while I have a moment of reflection and a personal reflection and then we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight I have one proclamation, the idea is the annual festival of lights. It says where is the annual festival of lights commences this day to launch the Bisbee holiday season? And whereas members of our community and surrounding area donate their time and hours to facilitate, bring the community together and launch the holiday lights within the city of Bisbee. I therefore, now Ken Budge, mayor of the city of Bisbee hereby proclaim November twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, as festival of lights. In the city, accordingly invite all citizens, visitors, and the surrounding areas to attend the festival of lights once in four thirty P M. to eight P M. on Friday, November twenty fourth. Thank you. All right, moving on. Uh, don't have anything to call the public? I'm pretty sure. And uh, then we'll move right into general business. So first go over the business is the accounts. Live by a motion.
I move that we pay accounts Pambal in the amount of three hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy cents, subject to availability of funds. Second.
I'm a motion and second, do we have any questions on the accounts panel? It's not.
Yeah, I do.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, page two. The contract service, I I work three thousand five hundred dollars. This.
That's the uh, the software for the building permits and tracking.
But they.
For the building permits, uh permitting. Then there's two different sides of it. You guys have the word border management, but this side that goes to community development is for the building permits.
How often this?
Every day.
No, how often?
Uh, it's an annual contract.
So if you're thousands per year, okay. Okay, and on page three. Oh, well, I just want to know on the legal services, usually it turns about nine to ten thousand this month. It has gone up to eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-six because you live the top of work here on the front now.
It's all all dependent on on the on the workload. You're more than welcome to review the actual uh detailed billing. Those are available for counts and to review. They have a turn of fire, heard the information on them, so if they're not included with the packet, but you're more than welcome to look at the details.
Yeah, that's good enough.
City manager, these those every, yes.
Yeah, it just it just the number because I watch it every time, so it must have nine to ten thousand, you just run up a little.
It just fluctuates based off of if there's and there's additional workload, stuff that we're not anticipating, you know, a lot of stuff that we've had come up with the uh, the city hall uh.
Okay.
Bidding project, all the different things.
So this probably has something to do with this, with this this new contact, okay.
November will be a lot lower.
Okay. Good. Um, it's a small amount, but I just add the the University of Phoenix, we have page five. In this for what's with the University of Phoenix.
That would be for uh, mass tuition for school and age as well.
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, it's for the for the schooling that we have decided to.
Correct.
Okay. And one more, page eleven. I just want, I think probably it's a, I'll have some answer on that. It's uh, it's a big amount. It's for Mohawk Lifts LLC, mobile column sanitation, eighteen thousand five hundred and thirty-nine. It is.
Yeah, now we approved that the other night.
Okay, this is by the.
The big lifting.
They lifted, oh, okay, that's what I thought, okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Um, I have one, I have you, uh, visitor center. And it, oh, no, no, no. Sorry about that. It was it's for streets and it says portal home management for twenty-five hundred. What is a portal home?
I don't know.
Um, which page is that?
On page nine. Worked actually that one. No, it's on.
Each time, that's I works. Well, that's the other I work.
Uh huh, that might be the other side of it.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
I just want one of those.
On portals, yeah, right. It's under the streets, I mean, yeah.
Okay, who else? The none, uh, we have a motion and a second to approve accounts bail without three hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and seven cents. All those in favor, second by the saying aye.
Aye.
Close and a, thirty hundred by ten. Twenty. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have three items tonight. Uh, we have a food bowl of minutes, a regular session for November seventh, acceptance of the recommendation from the design review board and approval of a parking facility runaway use permit for Lower Vista Park for Christmas on the Vista on Saturday, November twenty fifth. Um, anybody have anything? I do have one question on C.
Yeah, I have a question on C.
Okay, so we'll call C and I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda on its A through B. Yes, close to.
What?
On the motion of second to approve. Will you get consent agenda on A and B? All in favor, second by the saying aye.
Aye.
Close and a, giving on the I. Um, the one thing on C was the deal with the insurance. And we'll have it put it to you by end of day tomorrow. And yeah, we're it's gotten really close, so.
Yeah, well, so was the permit, so um, plus we had finances, we're taking it on this year, um, which are the lights on the trees on the Vista.
We also have one day left.
Right.
But we're open, so.
Exactly.
So uh, if it doesn't come in tomorrow, it doesn't happen.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I just wondered, was this a pride event or a city event? Because I saw the city advertising like a week ago and I didn't know that Pride was even involved until I saw the agenda.
Right, so the original organizers of uh, Christmas on the Vista, um, were unable to continue on with it this year, um, and so they offered it to us. So we're working in conjunction with the city as we started last year with the hometown holidays and doing an event. Starting with the festival of lights on Friday, you know, Bisbee. Uh, our barn event will be on Saturday, um, with Christmas on the Vista and trying to continue the lights a- along the Vista and then on Sunday, an event at St. Edric Square. Um, to kind of at least bring some kind of holiday event to all three boroughs of the community.
Okay, continue.
Okay.
And I just, I just, I I know I brought this up last year, I know I'm giving a dead horse, but I still have a problem with us being government and putting on something that says Christmas.
Yeah, that's why we as as non profit.
Well, isn't it?
Right, they're trying to, yeah.
But I I just don't like the optics and I have to say that for my constituents because I've heard about it.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you are you involved in the one also on B Street or no, that's?
Yes, yes, I'm helping with the vendors on the festival of lights and all this.
No, that's like clarification, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, I entertain a motion for on the C of the consent agenda, anybody?
I move that we approve I M D B on the consent agenda. Joining the plan there about the insurance.
Well.
Contingent on the best side.
Yeah.
Getting the insurance by tomorrow.
Second.
I have a motion to second approve I M C of the consent agenda for the uh, Lower Vista Park on November twenty fifth. All those in favors, second by the saying aye.
Aye.
Close and a, giving on the I's have it. All right, on all business, this uh, discussion of possible approval ordinance O dash V three sixteen, this is accepting the transfer of real property in southeast Arizona LLC located at uh, one twelve Nighthawk Bisbee. This is the house that uh, is almost complete and we're taking on, so we can start. In it, so hopefully, if you'd like to say something, Melissa, it's up to you. We talked about last, anybody have questions on it? Yeah, I think we're getting used to this, this is like number six or something.
The only thing I could say is that Ashley and I went and looked at it last week, it's cute.
It's cute, a really cute house.
Well, good, hopefully we find a family that we, yeah, I think we have some lined up. All right, um, so I'll make a motion to approve ordinance O dash twenty-three dash sixteen, accepting the transfer of real property from the southeast Arizona renovations LLC located at this uh, uh, house located at one twelve Nighthawk. Second, yeah, a motion second to approve ordinance O dash twenty-three sixteen, roll call.
Councilmember Jones.
Hi.
Councilmember Sweet.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passed, I'm asleep, so. Moving on to new business, item four, this discussion of possible approval of the governor's office highway safety grant in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for a DUI impaired driving enforcement overtime. Overdone, Chief Hoss.
Yes, sir.
There we go.
I do, if you wanted to skip all of that.
Now, in a little.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Council, uh, this is just our normal D O H S grant for this year. Um, the amount has been knocked down significantly from previous years of this year, I just asked for funding for overtime to attend details in educational clinics, that's pretty much it, it's, well, this one is real simple, it's just OT reinvestment is all it is.
What are the questions?
Uh, chief, for this approach period, is this by twenty twenty-four, what period will it cover?
It's a federal physical year, so it started October one, runs till September thirtieth.
Next year.
Of this year, so we're already into it, but I just got the contracts.
Oh, okay, okay.
Who else? Uh, there are none, I'll retain a motion for item four.
I move to approve the governor's office of highway safety grant in the amount of twenty thousand, twenty twenty-four dash A L dash zero zero nine DUI impaired driving enforcement overtime, second.
I have a motion of second to approve the governor's highway safety grant in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. All those in favors, by the saying aye.
Aye.
Close and a, giving on the I's have it. So move, next on your list here of money. Item five, this is discussion possible approval of the governor's office of highway safety grant in the amount of this one sixty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars for employment and related materials and supplies, mainly radars.
Small change, uh, the sixty-three thousand dollars, when you guys do a motion, um, it's a small typo on my part. If if we were adding up several grants when we did these, it's actually twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. So when you change it to twenty-four seven hundred is what it is.
Twenty-four seven hundred?
Yes, sir. Um, this one again is mostly OT related expenses, which is uh, for uh, the enforcement programs and stuff. Uh, this one is our uh, education in lieu of enforcement grant that we do, um, mainly focused towards juvenile drivers this year, is what we're going to focus on. Um, trying to talk to the kids about don't speed, uh, don't crash, things like that, so. Um, and it includes a small amount of money in this grant, the the four thousand seven hundred dollars, and that's just to buy some more radars because I'm still a little short on updating our uh, radar inventory, so this will help us out a little bit with that, that should cover about four radars unless the price significantly went up on us.
Okay, questions?
Well, I see here on the breakdown, the material and supplies, radars, the four thousand seven hundred dollars, is this how many radars?
Eh, about four, three or four, yeah. And over the past two years, the governor's office has gotten us ten, I think, if that number is right, so this will put us up to fourteen, which will leave us with two better old.
Some reduction, is this because I was looking at the statistics from twenty nineteen to this, is this because uh, a lot of the crashes and the speed has gone down? Is this why you didn't get as much money or?
No, um, I didn't ask for a lot of money this year because normally I ask for a lot of equipment and supplies, but I'm not a greedy person. And the governor's office has taken very good care of our department over the last two years that we've been doing these grants with them. Uh, so I felt it necessary to just add for the bare minimum of what we need. And the overtime money is more in line with our current staffing levels because last year I had close to fifty-three thousand dollars in overtime money. Um, and we fell about eight thousand dollars short in spending it. Um, so they gave us a grant, we didn't spend the whole grant, they kind of put them in a pickle because they got to figure out what to do with the money now. Um, so I just shrunk it down with what I felt was better manageable for our staffing until that accrues. Um, and though it it'll result in us not participating in some things, but it's not a big deal.
Who else? Okay, there are none, entertain a motion for item five.
I move to approve the governor's office of highway safety grant in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven hundred, twenty twenty-four dash E T S dash zero zero nine step enforcement and related materials and supplies, second.
And a motion of second to approve the governor's office of highway safety grant in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars for step enforcement. All those in favors, and by the saying aye.
Aye.
Close and a, giving on the I's have it, so move. Um, one more, here we go, discuss this item six, discussion of possible approval to allow the police department to purchase a used police vehicle using available federal asset funds and RICO funds not to exceed twenty-three thousand dollars.
Uh, this one's going to require a little bit of explanation, so you guys know we have our RICO fund and our asset uh, forfeiture fund that we get through our joint operation with DEA and all the public and lettered agencies. These funds, uh, the money goes into funds, it's for police use only, we request to use the funds, they give us the money, we spend it. Uh, my reason for this ask is, one, I have a need for the vehicle, uh, because we had the deputy chief of police position at the bacon for so long. Uh, I filled that position and now I don't have a vehicle for him to drive that's appropriate for the position. And number two, and probably more importantly, is um, I get a little irritated at these funds, to be quite honest, because they charge me um maintenance fees, I guess you can say, and I started the fund with twenty-seven thousand and as you can see, I now have twenty-three. And I'm tired of paying money for a fund that's my money and if I don't spend it, they charge me money, so I'm just going to stay.
You should, or interest, not.
Yeah, it's like interest, but it's it's not, it's the opposite.
Opposite.
Yes. It reversed interest, so.
Reverse mortgage.
That's the reason for the app, um, if you're curious about the vehicle, uh, I have several vendors that I go through, I managed to find a couple of vehicles that fit our need. Um, when I say used vehicle, I'm not talking like the towels and stuff we bought that had two hundred thousand miles on it, I actually found a a couple of uh, nice cars, one of them being a two thousand fifteen Ford Fusion, sounds a little old, but it was a captain's car for the Michigan State Patrol and it has six thousand miles on it. And that's it, so I don't really consider that a used car, I consider it a new one, but it's not a bad deal. And there's a couple others I'm looking at, I can't tell you what I'm going to buy because it all comes down to the deal. Um, and I, you guys probably learned by now that I I like to find vehicles, so I'll keep willing and dealing until I find.
That's not yellow.
No, this one's uh, it's blue, I mean, like, very blue, so.
We're we're rainbow, you know.
I'm trying to keep it clean, I'm going black, or black and white, and you got a chance for a twenty twenty Fusion, I did, but got shot in the foot.
Okay, questions, I'm sorry.
Uh, not so much a question, just a comment, I mean, we've been participating in, you know, the RICO funds and all that for many, many years. You're the first woman that's ever mentioned that we've had maintenance fees, I never knew that we had.
I didn't know that until I got a statement, asked my wonderful Julie Dell, where'd my money go? And she was the one to explain it to me, so now I know.
And she is.
Yes.
Hey, I want more, um, sure, I mean, uh, how would you uh, the fitting of this, how much would it cost you, are you gonna do you fit it, would this be?
I'm leaving the twenty-three covered.
Cover that.
Because if I make it an admin car, it, they put what they call an admin package on it and it is literally just four lights and a sign.
Okay.
Which is generally not expensive, it's not a full push bar and, you know, spotlight.
So to be to be within this amount, would it?
It should be well within that, well, I will do everything in my power to make it within that amount.
So then are we going to have, is it going to be fully marked or will it be like a ghost mark?
It'll be like my car, it'll just be an unmarked admin vehicle that just rolls around and responds as necessary. No, I'm I'm, all the marked patrol units will be a marked patrol, you know, but this is more of a, hey, we got.
It's a plan.
It's an, yeah, that's what you, that's the question, I gotta go to Phoenix for a meeting or, you know, whatever.
Saying there's some of them, I.
They're going for that, yes. We it's a possibility, but I can talk to you later about some of my concerns on doing those.
Yeah, I know.
Well, it actually costs the same, one of my concerns is is um uh, the pursuits we get involved in with our problem with the human smuggling and drug running. If you read the A R S code, it says fully marked visible patrol car with one red light activated. And a ghost graphic card technically meets that expectation that someone can truthfully say, I didn't know it was called. And you run into that problem.
They should know.
Okay.
It's just don't like red and blue, but lights don't run.
I'm colorblind.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, let's uh, how about a, you're good at those motions.
I move to allow Bisbee Police Department to purchase a used police vehicle using federal asset funds and RICO funds not to exceed twenty-three thousand, second.
I have a motion of second to approve, allow Bisbee Police Department to purchase a used police vehicle not to exceed twenty-three thousand. All those in favors, second by the saying aye.
Aye.
Close and a, giving on the I's have it, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
On to item seven, item seven is possible approval for the purchase of electric heater for the heater replacement program through the Bisbee Fire Department in the amount not to exceed one thousand dollars, and this is from the A R P D.
Maybe he's not here.
No.
Oh, he is, someone's here.
Oh.
He's hiding behind him. Sorry, that's my bad. Um, basically questions or just kind of really explain. Okay, so basically, a couple of years ago, we started this uh, electric heater program, it's changed, uh, with the private group. Um, they're not able to help us this year, so that's why we're coming to the council to see if we can do the thousand. Um, so we replace these heaters, some of the folks in town have these really old heaters and with a plug in the man is not very safe, um. We go in and we check the outlets, we make sure that everything's clear around the heaters. Um, some of the fires we've had in the past winters have been caused because of heaters and we're just trying to do our part to to uh fire prevention, you know, patented, so.
These don't, these show up when they tip over the old.
Exactly, yeah, they're not going to have the covers, the tip over guard, I mean, everything that you can think of.
You'll get.
I think we are looking at twenty-six or twenty-seven for the thousand dollars, it's somewhere around that, as many as we can get, the thousand.
Maybe another question, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I, you know, I think this is a great program and it's really benefited a lot of people. But that was going to be my question was, um, I know for the last several years, we've had a benefit that has helped and and provided. I mean, even when more would need it, they're they found a way to um, supply, so I'm just kind of wondering if you just weren't working with them anymore or I'm like, you know, this is.
Well, we are working with them in in other avenues, um, this is just something that they decided to step away from this year, I guess, I I really don't know the details, honestly. Um, but something that we could kind of pick up, I feel, hopefully, it's it is a good program to have, so. Um, but aside of why we don't have it, I really don't have that, so.
Any other thing else? All right, and I'll make a motion to approve purchase of electric heater for the heater replacement program through the Bisbee Fire Department in the amount not to exceed one thousand dollars using.
Second, yeah, everybody wants to second.
Double second, okay, um, so we have a motion and a second to approve the uh, heater replacement by program, uh, set one thousand dollars, all those in favors, everybody to say aye.
Aye.
Close and a, I have it, so move. And onto our last item, this is item eight. Um, this is a discussion of possible approval of a construction service contract between the city of Bisbee and D F L Construction Company, Inc. To construct the city of city hall building in the amount of three million nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Um, as you remember back, we brought before you, or I brought before you, the possibility of us entering into a contract with this uh, company, uh, after some negotiations, um. They did a good job on that and we kept the price where we wanted it, um, you know, will be, I'll let Joe explain here in a minute, though will will be a little uh, notice to proceed situation, but outside of that, uh, it's exactly what uh, we uh, went in for for prices.
And I can also explain a little bit, uh, with regard to the the packet, the details and stuff like that. Um, prior to the council awarding this contract, if the council wants to award this contract, we keep all of the bid information and the details confidential as per state statute and the state procurement rules. If the council approves this contract, then within three days, then we can release the details of of the of the bid process because then we have a contract, because the issue and concern you run into is, for example, the last time we went out to bid for the city hall project, uh, council felt all the bids were were too high and we rejected all bids and went back out to bid. So it wouldn't be fair to release the details of those bids and then go back out to bid and then everybody has details of what everybody else did, uh, and their details, so that's why we we first bring to you a couple meet, last meeting, uh, the uh, the uh, designation of the the lowest, most responsible bidder, uh, and then we enter into once, once we have that designation, then we're able to enter into discussions with them because there's usually some some give and take when it comes to the contract and stuff like that. And the one thing that they asked was, because of the time of year that we're in, that we're going into the holidays, their their concern was they need to be able to have enough time to coordinate and get all their subcontractors ready and lined up to go so that once they start the work, that they're able to meet that three hundred day deadline that we have for the completion. So the agreement that we came to was is we will, uh, if council approves, enter into the contract and do a notice to proceed to start construction within ninety days, to allow them that time to get through the holidays and then to coordinate with those subcontractors to be able to get this project coordinated. There's also, there's going to be a long, long lead times on certain materials.
There's also, there's going to be a long, long lead times on certain materials and stuff like that. We've heard, for example, when, uh. The dollar shore came to council, you know, for, uh, the electrical panels. They were looking at sixteen to eighteen month lead times just for an electrical panel, uh. So there's certain things that we we want to make sure that we were able to to meet the deadlines that we have for the for the contract. So that was the, uh, the agreed upon solution was is that we would issue that notice to proceed. For a start date ninety days out from when we, uh, sign the contract and issue the notice.
Or they can start earlier.
They can start earlier if they if they're able to get their contractors lined up and say they're able to get everything going by the end of February. Then great. They just asked for that time because. The concern is, is the contract provides for completion within three hundred days. If you're not complete within three hundred days, it provides for liquidated damages and, you know.
A hundred bucks.
We're kind of excited. We're we're a very easy municipality to work with. We, you know, work with them on approving the permits and all that other stuff. Um, but that is always a concern if you're looking at it from their perspective on the contract. Uh, significant amount of liquidated damages be over the the day of appointment. So that was the discussion we created.
Questions?
Uh, I don't know if you can answer this or maybe tell the, um. Breakdown on on payments that there, uh, is that going to be? The world.
Yeah.
The way. Difference down, yeah.
Right. The way they construction contract calls out and the way the project will work is that they will submit it. Uh, monthly, uh, payment request and that is typically for the work that has been completed during that prior month. So they will initially will give a, we typically will get a, an initial payment request. For the mobilization costs and stuff to get the site set up and get things going. And then once construction starts. Then they're giving us, uh, they're submitting a K application for the work that was completed. So we're paying for the work that's been completed minus a ten percent retention to cover any issues or or things like that. And then typically as the project goes along, usually once you get past this. A certain stage of anywhere from seventy to eighty percent complete, then we'll typically look at reducing that retention from ten percent to five percent. Uh, but it is on monthly pay applications. So it is, it's it's on a monthly basis and it's for work that has been done.
Okay, that that has been negotiated.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Say the, uh. When the. Pay. However, the, the. Well, I'm hard. It just went over my head.
But it will be, it will be a down, down, down payment for mobilization. Am I correct? So it'll be a.
There'll be a pay, a pay application typically for mobilization.
Okay.
But that's.
And after it will be on a monthly basis as, uh, work completed.
Yes, right.
It was something, okay.
What I meant, now I know what I was meant to say is, well, we will, we will be hiring our own, um, on-call engineer. To follow that work process to make sure it's done and so on. So we've already stood up that, we already agreed to that contract.
All right, and we have, we have someone who reviewed those pay applications. And verified that the work that's been done has actually been completed and. Because each pay application is going to have a a big, long list to break down of the different work items, for example, concrete work or. Or, uh, framing work, all the different specific details of the the project. And it'll have percentage completed and stuff like that and percentage remaining. And those are the types of pay applications that we process.
One more question.
Sure.
Uh, on the, on the contract and the total amount. And I I read through this and, uh, it it's a good contract. I have to say this, it's an excellent, uh, contract that we, uh, for for us. But the question is, um, are they going to back? Do we have a a stipulation on? They may come in after a few months and say the price of steel has doubled and. There's not not such thing. We can come back and say, well, you know, our cost has gone up. We want to increase. This is the, this is.
I mean, this, uh, the contract amount, they agreed to construct and that's.
I would stick to.
That's why we bid out and when we bid out, we provide the details. We we provide them with the full construction, drawings and documents. So that they know what each aspect of this project is going to cost.
Okay.
That's not to say that there could be some unanticipated changes, different things that could come up. But for example, there was a, uh, you know. You you see a a line break in the in the architectural drawings, something doesn't match up. It has to go back as to be redone. And it could cost some additional costs here or there, but we typically have a, uh, a contingency amount. Uh, to cover those. And we're also protected in fact that every construction project that. Individuals do for the city, they're required to post payment performance bonds. So the the payment bond that is issued guarantees that the the subcontractors and suppliers that work on the project. Have a mechanism to be paid because they can't put a lien on the project because it's government property. And then the performance bond essentially guarantees the city that the project will be completed. So if something were to happen and. You know, it it has happened in the past, uh, I've had, you know, I've worked for sureties where we've had to go in. And take over a project because something happened and the general contractor wasn't able to complete. An example of that was is we, we had a, a general contractor was doing a number of projects for the city to give up. And the owner of the company died. And the company just pretty much fell apart with with that individual who was running everything. They surety came in and under the performance bond. Hired a replacement contractor, came in and finished the project. So that those are, there's multiple layers of protection that we have on projects.
More? Well, just to follow up on that, so then we will be responsible for change orders or?
There's, there's always a process for change. It just depends on what the the potential change order could be. Uh, there's also potentials for extensions of time. If we have a large rain event and they can't get to the, you know, work on the side for a certain period of time and stuff, then we. Will look at doing a change order for an extension of time. And it could be a change order, a no cost change order. It could be a change order for additional time. You just, there's different aspects that can happen in a project. I don't anticipate, this isn't an overly complicated project. It's a two stories and thousands square foot structure. It's not an overly complicated, uh, facility. This company, D F L, they have built and constructed, uh, buildings, you know. Many times, uh, besides the best. So it's.
But you're saying it's not overly complicated, but it's extremely important to us and to our employees.
Oh, absolutely. No, it it's very important that we get it done and we get it done right, but but I. You know, you can always try to anticipate what what could happen, but there, you know. I've been doing construction litigation for fifteen years before municipal litigation, I'm in municipal work and. There's all, you know, a lot of times there's unforeseen circumstances. You just don't know. Until, you know, you actually get out there and you start erecting something like, wait a second. This plan doesn't match up with this plan. We need to go back to the architect and we need to get some clarification. And that may require additional material. Uh, you know, so there's just different things like that that could happen. But it's accounted for. There's a process for that in the contract. For the contractor, if there is an issue to submit a request and then there's a negotiation discussion to go back and forth. It's not just, hey, we need more money for this. No.
And we'll stick him on.
Yeah, uh, I mean, uh, this would, and this will have been my question on the change order. And, uh, I guess it was up to us and I just want to make this comment, but, uh, for. To put it in so the public that we're all aware, the change order will happen. When you, whenever you do any construction. There something will always come up. I, we just want to make sure on our part here, the council and the mayor, that we have. The funding because that will happen. There's no question. And you've had experience. I've had experience of working on projects, you know, malls and what have you. So we just need to make sure that 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 we, uh, we are aware of this, may I? I just want to make sure that we. We have contingency because change orders will definitely happen. I don't care how perfect you are.
Am I right? That you you, I've never seen a perfect construction project. There's issues that that do come up and you address them as they as they come up. And that's why the contract provides for those types of. Of provisions, um, you know, and like I said. We've, we've got a a project, uh. Superintendent, someone who's going to be overseeing it on the half of of the city who has the. The the details and the the expertise with that, um, and on top of that, you know, we're going to be watching it like a hawk.
And I might add, under that capital improvements fund. That's what we proposed and approved, three million nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and seven hundred and eighty-four cents. So. It is marketed right here and came in just a little on much, but.
You will end up spending more.
Well, you have.
It's just just to be on the safe side. That's all.
Mel did ask for that plaque for his office. Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, it will be out of Peter. All right, uh. We, uh, well, you know what? This, as you may know, I've been a bit of a goldmine and so I think a lot of ours, so. I'm going to, uh, make the motion if you don't mind to, uh. Move to approve the construction service contract between the city of Disney and D F L Construction Company. To construct the new city hall building in the amount of three million nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Second.
One more.
Yeah.
And, uh, we have a motion to second to approve D F L Construction Company to construct the new city hall. Uh, all those favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close name. Uh, here none, so. Noon. Tell you a thing, tell you his name in there. All right, um, there. Don't say manager, but there he did put one in there for your own.
I have about thirty, forty minutes to go over some of this stuff.
Yeah, I'll give it one at home. Yeah, and so that's about it. And I don't have my adjournment person, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'm motion second to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, go. We are adjourned. Thank you. Good, good meeting.